This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, December the ninth. Please stand for our invocation led by Father Dan Good, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. God our Father, we ask you to please bless our fair city, bless those who serve, may you give them wisdom from heaven, please give us peace and justice among our people, give us safety, Lord God, and bless us with the charity of your Son. May you fill us all each day with your grace. We praise you and we thank you in the name of your Son Jesus, who is Lord forever and ever. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Ingram.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone. It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our December ninth, 2025 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules at this time. I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, please at this time put on the off of the vibrated position, the off of the vibrated position. Interpersonated desiring to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance or agenda or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing this council, the speaker must give his or her name. Interpersonate desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than two o'clock PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wish to speak on a non-agenda item will not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address this council. A bell will indicate the sound of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. Second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing this council, there will be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who recognizes any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain the corner, there will be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of November twenty-fifth and December second.
So moved.
I'm talking.
Properly moving, second, ending the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from Mayor Chair Gottes.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Yesterday was a big day for our city in council with some of my staff and others around the state. Our city chose to join this, an SSUT lawsuit against the state of Alabama. We're joining the cities of Tuscaloosa, Mountain Brook, others, Hoover. The SSUT program, nobody really knows what that is. So I'm going to call it the internet sales tax. Ten years ago, Alabama instituted a flat rate tax for all internet sales. This was back in 2015. I think Amazon was still only selling books back then. It was a way that our cities, our counties, and our state could capture some of the dollars made off those internet sales. In the ten years since then, internet sales have gone off the charts. By our calculations, the city of Mobile is losing out around $34 million a year under the current structure. That is not something that as your mayor, I can stand by and watch. Thirty-four million dollars is a lot of money. And right now, I think the scheme is just unfair where our tax dollars spent here in Mobile, delivered by Mobile drivers, bought from Mobile stores, delivered to Mobile homes, that money is going all across the state to every county in the state and to every city in the state. That's not fair. And so we've joined that lawsuit in an effort to protect our local sales tax dollars. We've worked for years trying to find a fix to this with the legislature, and we'll continue to do that. Entering this lawsuit is not the end of those negotiations. I hope that it is a time for renewal of those negotiations. But in the end, the city of Mobile cannot sit on the sidelines and watch this fight. We might not have filed this suit, but this is our fight. And so I am committed to fighting for those dollars to come home to Mobile, to protect our schools, our roads, our citizens. As you may have heard, there are some negotiations ongoing to reach a fair rental agreement with the county commission as to our offices here in this building. In June, the commission notified us that our lease would be terminated, and our rent was going to be raised by nearly ninety percent, essentially doubling it from one hundred and twenty-five thousand upwards of two hundred and forty thousand per month, which is a lot of money. We immediately objected to that increase at the time, and we are continuing discussions. I was, I've spent time with all of the commissioners. This issue had not been raised to me prior to yesterday's comments during a meeting. I've directed our staff immediately to pay the rent that we were paying under the previous agreement. We had to get an agreement to do that. I can't just pay out the city's money without having an agreed amount that is being paid out for a specific purpose. But I promise you that we're going to continue to explore all options. Anytime that I, as your mayor, am directing anyone to spend your tax dollars, I want to make sure it's fiscally sound, that it's in the city's best interest. And so there are no options that we will leave off the table. We will explore all those options, not just to be a better steward of the dollars of this city, but to better serve the citizens of this city. It's imperative that our city and our county commission continue to work together on finding a solution to this, and I believe we can find a solution that serves all parties. Now, to fun things, I do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. You know, I and the council are celebrating this time of year with some of our clothing. I've got my old Frosty the Snowman tie on today, so I want to wish everyone here a Merry Christmas. And I'm excited to announce, I hope you see this as a gift from the city to you, that we are finally reopening South McGregor Avenue, and it will reopen to traffic this week, starting on December eleventh. After more than two years of construction, we're going to host a ribbon cutting at eight thirty AM this Thursday morning. The road will reopen shortly thereafter, and we'll be sharing some additional details soon. I know this project was disruptive to many. My daughter thinks it's been closed for ten years. I told her, no, honey, you're only eight, so how would you know? But this project does represent a $25 million investment in a thirty-year effort to modernize and expand this critical corridor here in Mobile, which is McGregor Avenue. I'm excited for everyone to see the finished product. It's frankly beautiful. It looks great, and I think it's going to be very functional and create a safer environment there at that traffic intersection. But I'm most excited that it's going to open that corridor back up for everybody who, like me, will be doing that last-minute Christmas shopping, getting to our shops that are there along McGregor Avenue. And I hope you will all come out with me on Thursday morning at eight-thirty to celebrate the reopening of this very important corridor. Now, it's my pleasure to call up Public Service Director Matt Anderson to recognize the Public Works Employee of the Month for December, Mr. LaBaron Johnson, who is our Public Services Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So LaBaron was, partially because of how good of an employee he is, was recently promoted to Supervisor for all of our garbage services in Mobile. And because of that, he has a lot of responsibility, and he had to be called away to deal with the situation. So he won't be able to join us. So I would ask if we could do this at the next meeting. I'll try and make sure he has somebody that can sub in for him on those things. Thank you, sir.
Very good. We'll double-recognize Mr. LaBaron. That concludes my remarks. Merry Christmas to everyone looking forward to today's meeting.
Adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Properly moving, second, ending the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for wave the noise ordinance on December twenty-first on Airport Boulevard, May twenty-first on Government Street, and September twelfth in Medal of Honor Park.
So moved.
Second?
Properly moving, second, ending the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Christopher Paragon.
Morning, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Christopher Paragoni. I'm with the Azalea City Center for the Arts. And back here, we've got some of our board members. We also have a representative from Florida, P. Carson, which is the Charter School for Performing Arts here in Mobile. I'm here to speak to you today about a proposal that we have to solve a need that is here in the city. When the Mobile Civic Center was taken down, the theater went along with it, and that created a hole in the city for the performing arts community. Azalea City Center for the Arts is under a contract to purchase the old Calagaz Building on Springdale Boulevard, and we have a proposal to convert it into a two-hundred-and-fifty-five-seat theater, which will solve the needs for lots of the performing arts groups here in Mobile. Without a current theater and public performing space, we have been left scrambling, kind of putting it going, you know, here and there to high schools, to different locations. And even when the city does build the replacement for the Mobile Civic Center Theater, this mid-sized theater is still something that lacks in the city. At two-hundred-and-fifty-five seats, it's going to be appropriate for all kinds of performing groups, from dance studios to improv groups. And if you look in the brochure, we also have interest from the Mobile Opera to be performing there. And now, there are other groups that want the main theater to come back, but this is something that will fill this need immediately. There's a lot of interest from some of the foundations in the city. The Ben May Foundation has already contributed a generous sum of money to this project, and the facility will be a fully accessible stage and seating. And in addition to that, it will have state-of-the-art lighting, sound, curtains, and all of the things that you need. The backstage area is going to have eight generous-sized dressing rooms, a big green room, and a steam shop that will allow for materials to be used by all the different groups. And now, if you don't know anything about Azalea City Center for the Arts, we've been around for about fifteen years, and we currently own our rehearsal space in Midtown, and so this will complement that rehearsal space. Azalea City Center for the Arts is made up of resident performing groups. Sunnyside Theater is one of those, that is my studio. And then we also have a music school and dance studios in there as well. And so this performing arts center is going to be available to any groups the way that our current rehearsal space is available to rent. The performance space will be as well. And so what we're asking from the city is some commitment of support and dollars. It doesn't have to look like a big lump sum, it can be payable over three years, but I do think that this is something that will not only benefit the city, but also fill a need that is current, and we could be open by next year if we can get the funding. So are there any questions?
And the questions are coming from this council.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds?
With the new arena design, it includes that side ballroom over on the west side of the structure. If that, and I think it was contemplated that that would be utilized for this sort of use. I know it puts your timeline a little bit back to, say, February of twenty-seven, if it's completed on time. And I think it would have more capacity than two-hundred-and-fifty-five seats over there. Is that space not sufficient to handle these sort of, or have you seen those plans?
I have not seen, there are plans in the arena for a theater.
Not a theater, it's a secondary ballroom where you would put in the, you know, the elevated seating and all, it's sort of like you roll out at a basketball game.
That would not be anything comparable to what this would be. This would be an actual performing arts theater. So for groups that put on theatrical productions and dance studios and music schools, and Florida P. Carson, which is our performing arts charter school in Mobile, that doesn't have a place to perform, this fills that need. Rollout basketball stadium seating is not quite what, is not, that's not on the same comparable level.
I'd ask if you don't mind if you could look at those plans and just see if that fits into, I mean, I'm probably not describing it precisely as it is designed, but I think during the design process with Populous, they were considerate of the dance studios and that sort of thing. I don't think the acoustics were going to match precisely to say what was there at the theater, but I think our thought or idea was that would be our short-term gap filler until we were able to come up with the funds or money to develop a bigger theater.
It's not always about bigger, though. I mean, this is a mid-sized venue, which will, I mean, not every group that was in Mobile that's looking for a venue could use what the Mobile Civic Center had to begin with. This is not just to replace the Civic Center, it's to provide a secondary performing arts venue, but it's more immediate than, let's say, what's down the road.
Mr. President?
Yeah, you argued on, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Christopher, for coming down. One of the great organizations in District One, Azalea City Center for the Arts, and the arts are very important for not just District One, but for the whole city of Mobile. So many great people go out and do a lot of great things and accomplish and travel around the world because of the performing arts. And we have a lot of great young people as well as adults that's participating in these type of programs. We can't make a commitment or anything at this moment, but I know that if you share that information with the executive branch, sending the ideas to the council, how that might, that partnership might look, but I know this, you're doing an amazing job, and I know it's a need, but we just have to figure out how we can make certain things work. But thank you for all the work that you're doing. I had the opportunity, if you haven't had the chance, I asked you to go visit, go to a play, go to, I mean, Christopher and his team is doing an amazing job, and so thank you for your service to our city.
I appreciate it. And any councilman is welcome to come to our facility, and we'll be presenting How the Grinch Stole Christmas for the first time ever in Alabama on December nineteenth through twenty-first.
Mr. President?
Ms. Gregory?
Thank you for coming, and I agree with my colleague, Councilwoman Penn. I know something that it did come up during our early discussions about the new arena and the fact that there is no standalone performing arts theater planned. I mean, there is one planned, but nothing in design. It will have to be a separate project. So there were some discussions about that, concerns, because what they will be able to do kind of in a short term over there is not really what you all are looking for, especially with acoustics and what you need in order to do the performances that you have now. So I think what y'all are doing in the interim especially is important, and then for the kind of size that you're looking for. So it won't be some big basketball arena size, but it is mid-sized for the, maybe some specialty performances that you all have. So again, if, I know the mayor is listening as well as his staff, and so if there is a way for us to partner with you guys, we will certainly all consider that. So thank you.
Thank you.
And all of whom who came with you to support y'all, just wave your hand. Yeah, thank you all so much for coming.
I recognize a lot of folks back there.
Yeah, yeah, thank you all so much, and thank you so much for y'all working everything.
Thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk?
Brenda Barnes?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Brenda Barnes, and I'm just going to go over this, I did an outline because, of course, I'm nervous, but I'm concerned. I'm not concerned for myself as a citizen, I'm concerned for my community. I am disabled, so I'm asking you guys to work with me because I'm taking medication, but this is necessary, okay? The issues I'm concerned with is purported 5G installations, Alabama Power Infrastructure, project and community displacement. This is what I feel like is taking place, I'm not sure. Okay, the issue is whether the city mobile properly approved for meets for the infrastructure, which I think is a bridge expansion, I'm not sure with Alabama Power, because they contacted me yesterday, and for them to be concerned, something is taking place, and I'll get, I'll get to the fact. I got three minutes, I'm going to try to stay under three. Whether Alabama Power City or contractors are subject to public notices on community engagement requirements, whether the project risks repeating.
Stop a clock for one second, and move the microphone a little bit closer to your mouth. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, speak, yeah.
Okay, that's better.
Yeah, just get a little bit closer to the mic.
Do I need to start over? Okay.
No, no, don't start over, just start right there.
Okay, so I'm concerned whether the project risks repeat home for herbal renewal displacements. We've gone through this in the black communities back in the sixties, and all of my investments, all of my parents' investments, all of our black communities' properties have been lost to eminent domain, new projects, the community didn't get any notices, didn't get a chance to voice our opinions. I'm sixty-two years old now. I don't have anything else to lose. I restructured my life over, this is the third time. And I have several properties in the area that these are taking places. So here's the applicable law that is concerned. It's Alabama Open Records Act of thirty-six, there's twelve, there's forty, Mobile Zoning and Row Ordinances, NEPA, Title Six Civil Rights, this disparate impact protections, the FCC shot clock orders and row rules, Alabama PSC Oversight for Utilities, whatever is taking place. Here's analysis, the city is not supposed to propose construction affecting protected communities without transparency or permits. Alabama Power said that they had permits to continue the project that they contracted out with the city mobile, and I'll address the area of concern. Environmental and traffic impact studies, civil rights impact review, public hearing opportunities, and I'm speaking again for my community, and I'm speaking for myself as a citizen. In conclusion, the community can demand permit disclosures, health-dependent reviews, civil rights evaluation, public hearings, and PSC complaints if Alabama Power.
Yeah, Ms. Barnes.
I'd like to give another minute.
Okay, we got one more minute.
Okay, so I'll just go, I'll go and let you know what my conclusion is, but my concern is the power grid that's been placed on St. Stevens Road, all of this area is the area of concern. From St. Stevens Road, first I noticed the power plant. I have a family history of cancer, okay? That was my main concern, it just didn't look appropriate, and the community, they said dressed, it just didn't seem appropriate. From St. Stevens Road to Pleasant Avenue, they are posts a hundred yards apart from St. Stevens Road to Stanton Road, and they're in people's front yard. My first concern was the health issue, but when I went through Somerville, Stanton Road, around by Carver State, and I don't know what's in planning because I didn't get a chance to check that, but I want to know if this has anything to do with a future bridge connecting to interstate tenure.
Mr. Penn, did you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Barnes, for coming down, and you make some concerns that I think is everybody should have concerns about. And so I called you on yesterday, I didn't get a chance to get in contact with you. If you had a chance to go back and watch pre-council, I stated my concerns about it. From me representing portion of where that it's going to be located, we didn't know at the time to the last minute that these things were going to go up. You asked a question about the city. The city, because it wasn't right away, those poles are on private property, so they pay those private owners to be able to place those poles there. And so by doing that, they didn't have to come through me or anybody else to be able to do that, because those residents receive a financial payment to have those poles placed there. For me, I still disagree with it. I disagree because I believe it just doesn't affect the people who live in that particular house, it affects the whole community as a whole. And so I asked our attorney and the city attorney what authority we have, and at this time, the city, even myself, we don't have any authority over Alabama Power or any utility company that's here in the city of Mobile. But what can we do to create change? And that's what I'm asking. Now, some of your questions regarding the health and all those different things, we actually requested Alabama Power to be here, and they can answer those questions for you or get, bring the people who know more information about all that. They told me that it shouldn't have any health problems, but they will be able to share that information. If you raise your hand, you can see them right after this meeting or during the meeting if you want to step out, and they would get the right information to you or the right people to talk to you about that. Now regarding the bridge, a bridge is not coming through Tomerville. That's something that I never heard that.
Look, those are not connected.
Yeah, yeah, maybe your three minutes is up.
So, but I'm going to give you my cell number as well. I did call you, and so you have it, but if you want to wait, we can talk about what ways that we can move forward together, but I didn't have that information, or the city that we all found out later. And so I have now requested a meeting. Postcards were sent out, but I will send a letter out, and I'm requesting Alabama Power to be present to talk to the community and share everything, all the information that you asked. Now they are able to go and get and share all that information at that meeting.
Yeah, also, Councilmember Penn, I would like to say that you probably want to have the Health Department there also, where they can verify everything that has been said at that meeting because of the health hazard and stuff. Thank you so much for coming down. Madam Clerk?
Roy Pendleton?
Good morning. I guess my question kind of ties into what she was talking about, Roy Pendleton. Yeah. When I saw these projects, I took pictures of it, and I noticed that it was in one of my classmates' yard, these structures, and I wondered what it was. You can pass it around if you like. And I spoke with Councilwoman Penn, and she told you what she just told you, the project Alabama Power was working on. But my concern was what the residential, why are this, because I didn't, I live in that neighborhood, and I got nothing saying that they were going to do this, that these people were compensated. I never was compensated. Now, they're compensated, shouldn't everybody get compensated? Who might affect? I didn't receive a dime from this. I didn't get a notice saying that they were going to do this. I don't even know what it is. All I know is about twenty block structures going down Pleasant Avenue and down Stanton Road in the Tomerville community. I don't know what it is, I don't know if it's safe, how many voltages, I don't even know anything about electricity, but I know this is in my neighborhood. And it just came out of nowhere, I just found out about this about two weeks ago. And I don't know if that's legal. I haven't spoken with anybody from Alabama Power about what that is or anything. That's my first concern. Second is transparency. Who do I talk to? What, who do I concern, you know, who can I go to? Was there a meeting between everyone in Tomerville or the people in that community? I haven't heard anything. My main concern is the safety of that community. What's the long-range plans? What is this, what's the purpose of this? You know, I don't even know what it is, first of all. What's the purpose of this? Putting these big block structures all throughout Tomerville, some of them in people's yards, what are we trying to accomplish here? You know, I don't know what it is. I'd like to get some answers, I'd like to know, and is it safe? And if somebody's being compensated, me being in that community, I should have been compensated too. I didn't even receive a notice, and it was done rather quickly. You know, something like that takes time, you know, and it just done, they paid the people off, they moved on, and everything is fine. No, 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 no. No, I need a little time to see what's going on, at least I do. I like to talk with somebody from Alabama Power and get an understanding, because this is like a major project. It's in my neighborhood, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Roy, for coming down. Me and you spoke on yesterday, and you shared your concerns, and I totally agree with everything you're saying. I think we have to do a better job in pre- Um, I think we have to do a better job in pre-council. I asked our attorney as well as the city attorney to make sure that what can we put in place to start making sure that these utility companies are having those community meetings and, and, and going forward, sharing what's taking place. Now, what I can tell you, the information that I have received, one of the questions you asked about the pole was, like, what's the purpose of it? Well, one is that USA Hospital is located in the Tomerville community. Uh, and it requires a lot of power. And when storms or anything take place, you know, the power potential could go out. Uh, and these particular poles would make sure that they have less interference with having a power outage. And that doesn't just affect the hospital, but it also affects the rest of the community. So that means that the community will be connected to having those, uh, receive the benefits as well as what the hospital receive, that community receive. I, and, and I hear that, and I understand that, and I'm grateful for having better service. But the problem is, could it have been done a better way? And, and, and could we find other ways to be able to still get that type of service? And so I have the same concerns that you have. I have requested, like I said, both of, um, our coun- our city attorney as well as our council attorney to start looking at some of the zoning things that you mentioned, Ms. Barnes, as well. Uh, but I totally agree with everything you all saying. Uh, but Alabama Power, uh, will meet you outside right now, or you can wait after the meeting, uh, to talk to you, uh, regarding some of the things that you're looking to, um, talk about. All right, thank you, Ms. President.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance is held over, sixty-four zero fifty-eight.
Mr. President.
Uh, uh, Councilwoman Ingram.
Mr. President, I move to hold over the ordinance.
Hold on, Ms. Ingram.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, Reggie Hill signed in, and I didn't get the form.
What, what resolutions?
He signed in to speak to ordinance sixty-four zero fifty-eight, resolution zero-three, fifteen fourteen, and sixty fifteen twenty-one.
Thank you, uh, to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. I rise today to continue these pertinent conversations pertaining to city business, and particularly as these are related to property, uh, matters and release of funds. And it's great to see that none of us were, uh, put out of here today, not being of y'all, but by our landlord, if you will. And so it's gonna lead us into what we're doing about these matters, particularly sixty-four, that's zero-five-eight. Uh, and this is dealing with the downtown, uh, Development District. We know that a lot of this is stemmed from how we're approaching blight. I think it's significant to have areas that are designated, maybe with entertainment, things of that nature, that can be specified separately. But when we're looking at coding and how we're looking at how we're gonna specify how people should upkeep their property, that needs to be very central, it needs to be very concise, it needs to be precise as well. Uh, we have matters that we deal with the municipal enforcement department that I believe can be looked at when we're doing this as well. There shouldn't be extra things for people to conduct business in the City of Mobile. There are a lot of strongholds. We've seen where we've increased the business license prices, and we've also seen we're making more restrictions that prevent people from wanting to come in and spend money with our city. So I know that this is something that we're gonna be looking at in January. I hope that these are some of the things that we're gonna be considering as we get to that. Let's look at please, zero-three, that's one-five-one-four. Um, this is the appointment of Ms., uh, I pray I'm pronouncing her name correctly, uh, Catalina, uh, or Cataline Fadala to the Mobile Housing Board Authority. Um, my first question, have, have any of you met with, uh, with Ms. Fadala, uh, before, uh, putting her on this list? And, and has any of that been presented to the public, what those findings were? We see that over the past, what, seven or eight months, we had about five or six people. So there's a recidivism problem when it comes to Mobile Housing Authority. And those people who were just put in, the first thing that they came and did was eliminate, or terminate, rather, the CEO from that position. And I don't think they had enough insight on what actually was going on. And we're saying, we're saying housing units closed across the entire city. Uh, and people are being deprived of their opportunity of quality of life, excuse me, opportunities for enhancement of their quality of life. And it starts with how we make these appointments. So I would suggest that, similar to what the United States Congress does, uh, when they have these people who are being appointed by the administration, and they have to be approved by the legislative body, you bring them before a committee so they can present and show us what it is that they intend on doing when they go and serve on these boards, because these are impacting thousands of people's lives. Uh, and lastly, that's, uh, six-zero, that's one-five-two-one, uh, this is discretionary appropriation. Uh, we know that there are organizations, uh, one in particular, we, we know, we said this plenty of times, been waiting on resources since twenty-twenty-one, that were approved by this body. And there are other entities who said that they haven't received their resources either. So there's something that's gonna prevent, uh, something like this, because these, these, you need these opportunities. And this is why we're here and why we're here to serve. So there's something that's gonna prevent that, I ask that that be eliminated. Uh, these ones need to go out to the people that deserve them, and this is how we improve quality of life in City of Mobile. Thank you for, you on the floor.
Ordinance is held over, sixty-four zero fifty-eight. Consider an ordinance to amend Appendix A Downtown Development District of the City of Mobile Unified Development Code, Chapter sixty-four of Mobile City Code, two, twenty-twenty-two.
Mr. President.
Let's bring it up to the floor discussion, Ms. Ingram. Uh, so moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion, Ms. Ingram.
Mr. President, I move to hold this open to January the sixth to give us time to look at the summaries and the comparisons.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unlet over January sixth.
Sixty-four zero fifty-nine, consider a proposed rezoning of property located at twenty-two forty-three, twenty-two forty-five, twenty-three forty-five, and twenty-five oh nine Halls Mill Road from B-three to B-five. Sixty-four zero sixty, consider a proposed conditional use permit for property located at twenty-five seventy-four and twenty-six sixty-four Solley Road to allow expansion of a religious facility in, in R, R-one.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, I don't pass.
Resolutions held over, forty-seven fourteen seventy-one, consider vacation of all rights waived located within Lot One of MAA ACDC subdivision.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to offer, I'm sorry, so moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion, Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I'd like to offer amendment identifying or modifying the legal description to match that of the map that's produced in Exhibit A.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Properly moving second on the amendment, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstain, six-one, going back to the original, uh, in other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, oppose, pass six to one, Madam Clerk.
Forty, forty-seven fourteen seventy-two, consider a vacation fee as a condition of the vacation of rights waived within Lot One of MAA ACDC subdivision.
So moved.
Second. Properly moving second in the discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I'd like to offer an amendment, uh, identifying the, uh, vacation fee as being waived to the original amendment. Send offer to the clerk's office.
Properly moving second on the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstain, pass six, six-one, going back to the original, in other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, oppose, pass six-one, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-five fifteen twelve, accept temporary construction easements for miscellaneous drainage repairs for Tomins Spring Branch East of Wilson Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All, all opposed, I don't pass.
Consent resolution is being introduced, zero-three fifteen thirteen through sixty fifteen twenty-two.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second. Properly moving second in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, rules waived, Madam Clerk.
Zero-three fifteen thirteen, zero-three fifteen fourteen, appointing Catherine O'Keefe to Citizens Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and appointing Caitlin Fadala to the Mobile Housing Authority Board. Thirty-seven fifteen fifteen, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, off-permisses-only license to Old Shell on Old Shell Road. Fifty-eight fifteen sixteen and fifteen seventeen are declaring weeds noxious and assessing cost for removal of weeds, Group sixteen seventy-three and, um, Group ninety-four. Sixty fifteen eighteen and fifteen nineteen, approve award a special bonus to the Public Works Employee of the Month and the Officer of the Month. Sixty fifteen twenty, fifteen twenty-one and fifteen twenty-two are determining appropriations to the Village Community Mental Health Program. Tominville Rattlers, Mobile County Public School System Division of Teaching, Learning, and Assessment serve a public purpose and approving payment.
So moved.
Second. Properly moving second in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, consent resolution passes.
Resolution is being introduced for the first time, zero-eight fifteen twenty-three through twenty-five fifteen twenty-nine.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions, zero-eight fifteen twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, with the, I'm sorry, not twenty-nine, uh, with fifteen twenty-nine being laid over for one week.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, rule waived, Madam Clerk.
Zero-eight fifteen twenty-three, approve purchase order to BNL Cable Construction for fiber optic installation at Maitri Park. Zero-eight fifteen twenty-four, approve purchase order to CDW Government for fiber optic transceiver modules. Zero-eight fifteen twenty-five, approve purchase order to Gray Bar Electric for utility access, access boxes for fiber optic security cameras. Zero-eight fifteen twenty-six, approve purchase order to Laney, annual weekly advertising. Zero-eight fifteen twenty-seven, approve purchase order to Schaefer Plastics, North America, for garbage carts. Twenty-one fifteen twenty-eight, authorized contract with advanced property exposure, US Corp. for Records Management.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, resolution passes.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one fifteen thirty, call for public hearing to consider the proposed rezoning of property located at seventy-one twenty-five Bellingraph Road from R-one to CW, scheduled January thirteenth. Forty-one fifteen thirty-one, call for public hearing to consider the proposed modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at thirty-four fifty-six Halls Mill Road and twenty-nine ninety, twenty-three ninety, West I sixty-five Service Road South, scheduled January thirteenth. Forty-one fifteen thirty-two, call for public hearing to consider the proposed modification of a previously approved planning approval for property located at sixty-seven ten Old Shell Road, scheduled January thirteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds.
The agenda summary for forty-one fifteen thirty is misstated from R-one to B-four. It should be R-one to CW, this is not required for amendment. I believe the letter of decision's been attached to our agenda, and that's part of what we're approving.
That's what I read.
Just wanted to make that note.
Okay.
All right. In other dis- uh, other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, public hearings called.
Announcements.
District six, Councilman Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, only announcement I have is just want to remind everybody that this Friday night, um, from five to eight o'clock at the Connie Hudson Senior Center, uh, the Connie Hudson Senior Center Foundation will be hosting their, their, uh, their Christmas dance. Um, uh, ten dollars at the door, uh, light buffet included with that, and then also Christmas attire. So that's, uh, again, that's Friday at, uh, at the Senior Center in District six, um, from five to eight. Um, and I did, uh, did want to commend the mayor. Um, I know obviously, uh, the comments that were made regarding the, the tenant status of the City of Mobile. Um, I, I do want to commend you, I, I definitely, uh, like the ideas that you have as far as, uh, the potential for looking other places. Um, you know, District six, we're, we're out, we're out west. And, um, you know, a lot of times to, to do business with the City of Mobile, it, it takes a, a effort or extra effort. Um, so, um, you know, definitely exploring what, what the city looks like, uh, as far as where we, where we call home um, to offices and departments, I think that's a very fair thing to take a look at. And, um, I do want to say a misnomer that I, I did see just, um, across social media, because we know everything on social media is true. Um, a misnomer that the city withheld paying the county for rent due to the financial state of the city. That, that's absolutely absurd. Um, that was a, uh, you know, from my understanding, that was the potential to bring people to the table. Um, people are at the table now, um, so glad that we could bring, uh, bring people there and also bring the table. Um, but, um, definitely appreciate you, uh, looking at that. Um, again, the, the City of Mobile's in great financial state, um, thanks to stewardship of councils and mayors, uh, before, before us. So, and I did just want to touch, touch base with that. Uh, thank you again for exploring options or being willing to explore options to take a look. And, um, definitely, as we walk through this or as you walk through this, um, the District six council office, I'm still got that leak. So, um, I, I don't know how much a, a ceiling tile costs, but that, that could be a cost savings for the county if they just fix the, the roof, so, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Woods. District two, Councilwoman Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to commend the residents for coming out on Thursday, December the fourth. We held our first all-communities, uh, meeting, um, at Vial Health Center, and it was, uh, packed, as a matter of fact. Um, we, uh, were able to, uh, feed all of the, uh, participants. We had an opportunity to get informed by our administrative staff. Thank you all for your services, uh, you were well-prepared and very, it was very informative. In addition, I want to give a special thanks to the City Council clerical staff who had everything prepared and ready for us to go. Um, and lastly, um, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and wishing you joy, peace, and hope for the season, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ingram. District four, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was disappointing to see on the county commission meeting that they sort of aired this negotiation out. And hey, it's fine, you know, the city likely should have been paying a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or whatever the old payment amount was. I think they probably should have been paying that amount. But to accept this, uh, ninety percent increase in rent, uh, with your biggest tenant, I think there's other options out there for us, actually better options, I think, could be out there for us. I think that's probably not the best way to go about it. So I've asked that the city not enter into any long-term deal with the county. Uh, I've, I've also asked that we explore other options to move our city operation closer to the city center. I think we'll all benefit from that. Also ask for the city to take inventory of the amount of space we're using here in Government Plaza, see if there's an opportunity to consolidate our current use of this building. And I understand the county has substantial operating costs for this building, I understand that. Just because those operational costs higher does not mean that this real estate is the best real estate for the citizens of Mobile. And, uh, so I, I look forward to the discussion. I know we got a, a great new leader in the mayor's office who's gonna be digging into it along with his team, and hopefully we'll get this thing resolved sooner than, rather than later. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Reynolds. District five, Councilman Fleming.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Um, I would like to echo the good news that the mayor shared regarding the opening of the McGregor Avenue project. I would like to thank everybody who worked so hard, um, all the engineers, planning people, all those silent heroes. It's gonna be exciting, new project, uh, have opened up. I would also like to really thank the neighbors in that area and that part of town for their patience. Um, and hopefully this reopening of McGregor will help ease some of those traffic concerns you've all been living with the last two to three years. I would also like to remind everyone of our District five community meeting tomorrow night at six PM at ER Dixon Elementary. We should have a representative there from several city departments, public safety, mobile fire and rescue, uh, to answer any questions that may arise. Um, if you do come, which I hope you do, uh, please bring a, a new toy. Uh, the new toy will be donated to Fostering Together, and this is an important time of year in Christmas and the holidays, and, um, it, it would be great to help out children in need. And then I would also like to announce today, beginning, beginning today in District five, there's gonna be a smoke alarm blitz on the southern end of the district with, um, in the Greenwich Hill subdivision, and I'd like to thank Chief Kalson for, for doing that and the rest of Mobile Fire Rescue Department. So Merry Christmas, everybody.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Fleming. District one, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to join in with my colleagues, um, speaking about the, um, our lease agreement right here and with the city and county. At a ninety percent increase, I'm requesting that we look at other options. Um, when you think about District one, we can love to use an extra million dollars to be able to provide service and opportunities. Um, and I, I don't think paying
Um, and I, I don't think paying three million dollars, um, should, um, be the option. And so I'm requesting that we look at different options, um, even to the point is that our city is, is different from most major cities. Uh, where our downtown is located on the east, the east, east of the city and it's no, we go in the farther, we'll be in the, in the bay, right? And so we understand that, uh, maybe being centralized might be a better option. And so we should look at other options. I also want to speak about the residents that came down here about their concerns. They have legitimate concerns, guys. This is something serious. Um, and we as a body, not just a city, because we don't have any control of, um, utility companies, but will we have to find out who have those control and figure out what ways that we can make sure that the information is getting out properly? Um, and, and that's my goal. And that's what I'll be working on for, to figure out what ways that we could put in place, even if we don't have the authority. If I have to go to the state level, the federal level, whatever we have to do, we gotta see these changes. Um, so I want to commend them for coming down here and sharing their heart. Um, coming up, we will have cookies and Christmas cheer, uh, with Councilman Cord. That will be at Pullman Bakery in District one. We're inviting everyone to come out on Friday the nineteenth at four P M. For a great time of just fellowship, talking, um, and just celebrating, uh, Christmas cheer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilman Penn. District seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just to piggyback on my next-door neighbor colleague, uh, Bo Flemings, uh, announcement about South McGregor. Um, that is next door to my district. However, many, many of my constituents have been impacted by all the work that's been going on on South McGregor. So I will be there to, uh, be a part of the ribbon cutting. And, uh, just to let you all know, of course, Councilman Daves, who retired, um, would have been there, but he can't because he is in Washington, D.C., but he certainly sends his best regards and, um, for all of the work that went into, uh, planning and design and construction and the patience that all of the residents in District five and everybody else who uses McGregor, South McGregor as a regular route have shown during this process. Um, also, uh, we heard about, uh, some smoke alarm blitzes. Uh, we talked about that at my district meeting last week. And I mentioned to Chief Glisten this morning that we might want to look at a couple of neighborhoods in my district as we get into the first of the year for some smoke alarm blitzes. If you are interested, if your neighborhood is interested, please let me know. The fire department does these for free and it is a great, great service. Coming up this weekend, uh, will be the holiday market, Makers Market at the Mobile Museum of Art. Come on out and do some Christmas shopping. It is a great, great opportunity for everyone to come out. You can see the museum while you're there and, uh, just take advantage of all of the arts and crafts and vendors who will be there and do your shopping. And, uh, last but not least, I want to introduce some students who are with us. Uh, we have, uh, Councilman, uh, Woods and I have students who are here from Faith Academy today. They are seniors at Faith Academy, y'all stand up. And they are part of the government class in their school and they come in yearly to, to shadow us. So good to have you all here. My student is Selena, uh, DeFalla, Selena DeFalla and then Councilman Woods.
Yes, we have Nicholas and Emma. Um, so thank y'all for, uh, for coming and hanging out today.
So it's great to have you all here. Thank you for coming. And that's all from District seven.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gregory. And season's greetings to the citizens of District three and also to the citizens of Mobile. As our mayor had stated earlier, uh, in his announcements, that, um, if you look around his administration, some of his people of his administration, um, the city clerk and her staff and, and the council members, we are wearing red. Uh, last week we wore green. But if you look at the color red, red for Christmas symbolizes Christ's blood and sacrifice in the Christian tradition, representing love and redemption. Also, uh, while it's tied to the pagan winter celebration for life, it's seen in holly berries and, uh, poncettos and is popular by the Coca-Cola iconic Santa Claus. Uh, it signifies passion, life and a vibrant promise of spring during winter connecting to faith and festive cheer. So on last week, we wore green, uh, this week we wore red and next week at the history museum, uh, we will be wearing festive holiday colors on next Tuesday. And again, our meeting would not be held in this, uh, auditorium. It would be held in the history museum right down the street. On last Saturday, had the opportunity to, uh, attend the Peninsula First Annual Holiday Gala. Uh, the Peninsula of Mobile is a nonprofited, which is located in District three. And they had a fundraiser on last Saturday at the Gulf Quest Museum. It was a fun engagement where many residents who, uh, came out to help this fundraiser and also helped bring in the celebration of, um, of the holiday season. It was a great event and I'd like to thank the, um, board for inviting me out on last Saturday, uh, to, uh, help with this, uh, great ordeal that is helping District three in the Peninsula of Mobile. On tonight, um, District three, we will have our Christmas celebration. It will start at six o'clock P M. at Pillins Miller School. Inviting all the residents of District three to please come out. Uh, we will have plenty of food, fun and entertainment on this evening at Pillins. And we're also asking the residents not required to bring a non-perishable item for seniors in the nursing home and nearby facility. Again, this would take place this evening at six o'clock P M. at Pillins Miller School. And also this coming Saturday, uh, December the thirteenth is our annual, uh, parades of threes, uh, hosted by myself, Representative Barbara Drummond, and also Representative, State Representative, uh, Alia Clark. Uh, the parade will start at two o'clock P M. at B.C. Rain High School and will travel upward on D.I.P. and will, uh, disband at Pillins Miller School, inviting all the citizens in Mobile to come out this coming Saturday at two o'clock P M. I believe that this weekend weather is going to be way better than last weekend's weather. Okay? Do we have anything from the administration?
Yes, uh, if I may, our, uh, Public Works Employee of the Month, Mr. LaBaron Johnson, was able to rejoin us after addressing that sanitation emergency. So, uh, if I can recognize Mr. Matt Anderson to come up and introduce us to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President, for sparing us some time here at the end of the meeting. We want to recognize Mr. LaBaron Johnson today. He was actually nominated for this award when he was still a crew chief over in the Public Services Maintenance Division. In the meantime, uh, he's been promoted to supervisor in sanitation. And he is the supervisor responsible for the household garbage pickup in the City of Mobile. A really tremendous responsibility that obviously everybody takes very seriously. So we're grateful to Mr. Johnson for his service and we want to recognize him as such today. His coworkers, his subordinates and his supervisors all recognize and respect his skill, not just as an employee, but as a manager and as a colleague advising and coaching the folks that he works with. Uh, there are no complaints about Mr. Johnson. That's pretty special. I, I couldn't, I wish I could say the same about myself, uh, and I'm sure everybody else in the room does too. He's always been willing to do whatever it takes to get the job done. He's helped when it, when it's come to, uh, when it's come to analyzing the issues that we've had when he was in charge of sweepers. Uh, he is a, he is an asset to the city and I hope that we have him for many, many more years. So please join me in celebrating Mr. LaBaron Johnson as Employee of the Month.
Yeah, congratulations to you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank y'all so much.
Is there anything else from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?